I'd like to bring the Upper Moyland Township regular scheduled meeting for November 14th to order. First thing is a moment of silence. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, on which we stand.
Would you take role, please?
Word one.
Present.
Word two.
Here.
Word three.
Present.
Word four.
Here.
Word five.
Here.
Word six.
Here.
Word seven.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to first mention, the board met in an executive session, 11:12 on Saturday for personnel and legal issues. Next, we have some presentations. These are presentations that we have started for service awards for the amount of years for people that have worked here. And in this first session of them, it's interesting, it adds up to 100 years, over five people. But I will read these, and then, once I complete that, then I would like all the recipients to come up, and we will take a picture in front with the board, and then you can have one with your family if we have. Box photographer? Okay, Matt will do it, I think, I just saw Chief Block take off, too.
He doesn't want to do it.
First, we have Andy Gerth, 25 years of service. Andy started with the fire service career with Upper Moyland Township in 1997. During his tenure with Upper Moyland Township, Andy has served as the first aid and CPR instructor along working closely with the Eastern Center of Arts and Technology. Andy has served in a variety of other roles, including state certified fire suppression instructor, inspector of fire investigator, and office of charge of the shift. Next, we have Pat Stasio, 25 years. Pat initially served on the recreation program coordinator from 1988 to 1995. In 1997, he was hired as the director of parks and recreation and has served in that role since then. He supervises the department with eight full-time employees, one part-time employee, and many seasonal employees.
Is there room for questions?
Well, I'm at the end.
Oh. I want to know what happened in 1996.
Next is Elda, forgive me, Maggio, 20 years. Elda began Upper Moyland Township in 2002 as a part-time secretary in the Office of Emergency Services and Fire Marshal. 2016, she began full-time as code enforcement department. In addition to her duties as the code secretary, she also serves as secretary to the zoning board. Then we have Jim Murphy, 15 years. Jim Murphy joined Upper Moyland Township in 2070, has served in the Parks and Recreation Department. Since, Jim oversees all maintenance operations for our 19 parks and open spaces. He supervises five full-time staff members, as well as eight to 10 seasonal employees. And next, we have Chris Strange, 15 years. Chris began his firefighting career in 1989, when he joined the Willow Grove Fire Company. In 2007, he joined Upper Moyland Fire Department as a full-time firefighter. In addition to his firefighting responsibilities, Chris has also served in the emergency management coordinator. He currently serves as an officer in charge. I do want to state, this used to be done years ago, with years of service awards and stuff. And, I don't know, we weren't on the board, I think, when it stopped. But, Charles, I want to say thank you, because you're the one that brought this up to get this started again. So, with that, would all the recipients come up to the front for a picture with commissioners? Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks. Thank you. Congratulations. I'm glad you guys can hang out. Thanks. Good. You guys ready to take a picture with your significant others up here? We do have the time for this. We get banked upstairs. This is now, uh, sleeping. I used to tell my guys, take your time, hurry up. You're the one to start it. Got to give credit where it's due.
Where's he, where's Matt gone?
Okay. All right, now we will continue on to a public hearing, number 0960.
Motion to approve public hearing 1960.
Okay, we have a motion to open it.
Second.
We have a second. From here, Alex, would you take care of this?
Yes, Commissioner McFatridge. So, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to entertain public comment on an ordinance that was duly advertised two times, in legal intelligence, sir, once on October 30th and once on November 6th. This ordinance is amending the township's transportation impact fee. This is a fee that is imposed on each new subdivision, land development, redevelopment, or change in use of land within the township transportation service area for road improvements and township costs related to the same. So, the fee was in place since its enactment in 2017, and thanks to the cost of living and the construction cost index changes, after review of the experts, they recommended that the transportation impact fee increase to $2,238 per trip, just based on the new estimates and the studies that were done from the engineering news record. So, with that, like I said, the entire purpose of this public hearing is to have input from the public, if they have any, on this ordinance.
Do we have any questions from the board, or comments?
I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, this is utilized for every land development project we have. And it's going well since it's been in session. We had issues with, you know, traffic improvements for this, traffic improvements for that, and it made it pretty black and white, so I'm very much in favor of this.
Anyone else? Any from the public? Any comments?
I'm going to make a motion to close public hearing number 1960.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close. Do I need to call a vote for this one?
Yes.
Okay. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes. And this will, this is on the agenda for later on tonight. Public comments, non-agenda items only. If anybody had anything to bring up? Okay. Treasurers' Activity Report.
Make a motion to approve the Treasurers' Activity Report for October 2022.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes. Approval of minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for October 3rd, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments from the board of corrections?
Corrections.
Board of corrections. Now, that's a chief.
Not tonight.
The chief does that. About from the public, anybody comments? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes. Okay, committee recommendations, finance.
Finance Administration Committee recommends the following action. Now, these are not exactly how we discussed it in our committee, but we can do it this way. So, I'm going to go ahead and do it this way. First is to approve the appointment of Natalie Soliski to serve as the alternate position of Michael Levecchio on the historical commission and complete the remainder of the current term that will expire December 31st, 2024.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion from the board? From the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain?
And all, and these three all were discussed in committee. B, motion to approve the appointment of Al Dimasasian to serve the voting position of Natalie Solinski on the historical commission and complete the remainder of that term that will expire December 31st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion from the board? From public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes. Okay. 3B, motion to approve the following with respect to the East Montgomery County Turnpike
Interchange Group. Become a member, allocate $1,000 per fee to be a member, and approve to propose memorandum of understanding agreement.
Okay.
Second. Anybody?
Second, I did.
Okay, we have three items really in this. Does the board want to do these individually, to allow the $10,000 fee, or to propose the memorandum of understanding? If everybody is okay with this, I can do them in one lump sum.
I think we could do it all in one.
All at one time.
Okay.
We have some conversation about it.
Okay, now, any discussion?
Yes. This is a good move for us, just to make sure we're in the room with any decisions to get made about this, and any interest that we get on our behalf. I do have one, I'm very much in favor of this, but I would like to see the committee expand it to include Lower Moyland Township. They have a significant part of real estate in the, along the Turnpike Corridor, and I don't think there's a problem with adding them in the future. I think we should vote on this the way it is, but Lower Moyland Township should be at the table, or have the opportunity to be there. We've always advocated for this because it was the Montgomery County, the Cross County Turnpike Corridor study, and for reasons that we could never understand, Montgomery County decided to carve out Lower Moyland Township. We get a significant amount of traffic to our turnpike interchange that comes across Upper Moyland Township via many state highways, Edgell Road, Davisville Road, County Line Road, Byberry Road, Davisville Road, all those cause traffic, so this is why I think it's important that Lower Moyland be included in this study.
Okay, I just wanted to make an announcement. Abington, Hattler, Horsham, Upper Dublin, and Upper Moyland are all part of this group at this time, and that's what we're voting for right now, and we can always add the other.
Okay.
Can I just, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that there was some language that was of concern, and I want to make sure the board is fine with it. If you look under the whereas clause, where it says whereas a capital, interchanges, and surrounding road projects, program, etc., what they've done is they've divided the priorities into two different groups. There's tier one, which is zero to three years, and then there's three to seven years. And the Willow Grove Interchange is in the zero to three, so it is a first priority, but it is in there with other priorities as well. As I, I know there was a little bit of discussion about that. That was really the only part of the agreement that I think there was at least some, maybe not total consensus on, or maybe there is, I just wanted to point that out.
When is the first meeting slated?
Having, they've been having meetings. The next meeting, I believe, is in a week or so, and I could, and this is one of the reasons we broke it up into three different categories, we weren't sure if all three of them were going to be agreeable to the board, so we split them up into three. It was that third one that I thought you might want me to go back and say that you weren't entirely comfortable with it, but...
I don't really think that having a whereas clause means that we committed to it.
Well, it's telling you what their...
The whereas clause about the priority of the projects, is that, I mean, it's a committee to discuss, or is this an absolute commitment to pledge to that outline?
You may not have background on this issue, but what this is doing, Commissioner, is it is setting forth very openly and publicly that this is, these are the groups of projects they're going to be prioritizing. So, are they bound by it? No, they're not bound by it, but they are stating what their priorities are going to be. And this actually is in here because of concerns that we expressed, that Willow Grove needed to be a top priority in order for the township to agree to it. They've done that, but they also kind of added a few other projects, and that's really the catch, is the board okay with having other projects?
No.
Also, okay, that was, that was kind of what I thought, so...
I did want to note, though, the other two that we definitely think were, Willow Grove should be a higher priority. Virginia Drive and Welsh Road are design only. Willow Grove is design and construction. I don't know if that makes a difference to you, Commissioner Spearing.
I understand that, but then it's a committee to advocate for the use of public funding for that, this design work. And, and once it's done, it gets, you know, it's going to move up, going to be competitive with our project, so I don't want to support anything that's competitive with our project. Unless we get an absolute, we should have absolute commitment here, that, you know, the committee unanimously supports the interchange at Willow Grove, bar none.
And I think they do, I mean...
Well, it's not in here, though.
Well, they're making it a priority, they're listing it as a top priority, but I wasn't sure where the board, did the board want this to be the absolute number one priority, or is it okay with sharing that priority status with a few other projects?
Well, if you look at the first, number three, it's to initiate design for Virginia-Welsh. The second one, three to seven years, says it's for coordination for the new Welsh Road interchange improvements to advance design and program full or phased construction. So, it's two different projects in two different categories. It's not the same project.
And I want to keep in mind, Matt did already push back to get this as the number, the only number one construction, is the Willow Grove.
Yeah, that's one way of looking at it. I mean, it was, what I understood was the board wanted it to be absolutely number one, but you're right, it is absolutely the number one construction project, but they will be working on, I would presume they're going to be working on other projects during that first zero to three years. It won't solely be Willow Grove, and I guess you couldn't really expect it, but, you know, there's all these other jurisdictions that want to get something out of it, too.
It would be great if, yeah.
Well, they already did.
Willow Grove was one.
They already got, in years and years and years past, they already got millions and millions of dollars. I know you weren't here then, but, I mean, the 309 interchange connection, all the flood money that went through that whole corridor, Virginia Drive, they got it. Horsham got it. It's our turn, and we need a commitment from this committee, 100%. I'll support this, but, you know, because I think it is in our best to support it, but this has to be clear and obvious that we need, you know, those votes from Todd Stevens as a written commitment, right up front, and all the other state reps that'll get to see this. Because we did support them, for money, 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 all the way down to Turnpike Corridor, and some things are getting redone already, and we haven't seen this yet, and we were at the table then, and we got told no.
We were at the table then, but we did not have the design. We will be the only one that has a design out of all this. But I agree with you, we've got to be number one, but we need them to get the money also, in grants and everything else, because, and we got to work with the other townships. So, I'm okay with all of it, it's going to be, Matt will let us know if he thinks they're straying from us not being number one on the list. Also, with this, we do need to partner with them if there is, if there are other smaller projects. I hope this group does go after those, because it will benefit all of us, and if, we have to do it all together, because it's a large amount of money, and we need their support.
I agree with that.
And just to put it in perspective, our project is, we have about 12 or 13, a million dollars remaining. They've, there's our 50, 60, 70 million dollar projects. So, ours is a relatively small project, they understand that, and I'll convey again to them what your sentiment is, is that ideally, we're entering into this in good faith, and we are going to expect them to be operating in good faith that this is a top construction project.
And we do need to be at the table with them. The only other thing, Matt, if you would, ask Matt Edmonds, who is basically heading up this group, to see if they would include, or at least extend it to Lower Moyland, ask him if they would.
He has told us in the past in this room publicly that if there was another opportunity, he would consider it.
So...
So, my, my only comment on this is, I agree with the number two item. However, I feel like it's been developed in concert with other entities, and I feel like listing those entities as part of this design will help show that we've been in conversation with this, and that it's a project that's accepted in the eyes of the Turnpike Commission and PennDOT. Because we've been at the table with them, and we've talked about this work, and I don't want this group thinking that we've gone rogue, and we're coming to the table with this as an ultimatum type thing, it's something that we've talked, we've been talking about for years. So, that would be my only comment, I don't know if that's acceptable to my fellow commissioners to add on that number two, concept developed by Upper Moyland Township in conversation with the PA Turnpike Commission and PennDOT, or something along those lines, so they know that it's just not something we've done alone. As we're looking at priorities, I want to make sure that people understand that this is something that, you know, it's been in conversation, it's a collaborative project, it's not just something that this township wants.
They know very clearly, Kevin's been dealing with this group for a long time, it's pretty clear what we've been looking for.
Well, the reason I say it, Commissioner McFatridge, is because other line items note specifically Turnpike Commission as collaborators, and note PennDOT.
We have spoken, we've been involved with all of them, yes.
Understood, and, you know, if other projects are talking, or specifically calling out those entities, I think that it's fair for us to call out those entities as collaborators as well, just so it doesn't get lost.
Okay.
While we're talking about this, make sure that this is an agenda item for the CDC meeting.
In November?
Yes.
Any other comments from the board?
So, yeah, I guess, if we're, if we're making changes to the MOU, and we are pushing this to an agenda item in the CDC meeting, are we now breaking this?
No, 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 I'm not trying to do that. What I'm saying is, I want this updated regularly.
Regular update.
On the CDC meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I can always, you know, I'm looking for feedback on Lower Moyland.
Okay.
One of the questions we asked the Turnpike Commission, and they didn't know what we were talking about, was what happened to the fourth lane in each direction, east and west, on the main corridor? And they, they never even wanted to talk about it, they acted like we didn't know, never heard of it. And you drive the turnpike down, and you see them putting pylons in for overhead structure, did they consider the fourth lane or not? You know, like, I just, we don't know. It was very clear and concise on their long-term plans, their 20, 40 plans for the turnpike, and now you can't even find it. So, we need to talk about this every month, every meeting. I'm not trying to take this particular commitment back because that's not going to help us.
That's fine. They just want to be updated.
Right. And would have preferred to have all these line items available in the committee for this.
My final question, and it's for you, Matt. Can you explain the allocation of $10,000 in engineering, support services, and technical assistance? How is that broken, broken down for us in collaboration with the rest of the...
Everyone has a flat $10,000, and as it mentions in there, the purpose of this is to retain and pay engineering services that would be required for planning purposes for these regional projects. And I think this is still new, so how it specifically gets spent will probably, but the concept, the principle, is to pay for these professional services to help the group identify and plan and promote these projects.
Be able to report to us next week what we already committed in the Montgomery County, Cross County, or the Cross County Turnpike Corridor study, we already made that commitment. I don't know that everybody on this committee did.
Financially?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions? Anybody from the public? Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, 3B, motion to approve the Township Engineer McMahon and Associates 2023 hourly rate increase. We have a list of what positions are being moved.
Question and second, first.
Second.
Okay.
Again, we have a list of the rates that are going up, and it's, this is the time of year they have to do it before we do our budget, so...
Okay, any questions from the board? Any question from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, C, motion to approve the tax assessment appeal between the Township, the School District of Upper Moyland, and the taxpayer CGCMT 2013-GC17 Marilyn Road.
Second?
Second.
Second, go ahead, Sam.
So that would be my only comment. I don't know if that's acceptable to my fellow commissioners to add, on that number two, concept developed by Uppermoreland Township in conversation with the PA Turnpike Commission and PennDOT, or something along those lines, so they know that it's just not something we've done alone. As we're looking at priorities, I want to make sure that people understand that this is something that, no, it's, it's been in conversation. It's a collaborative project. It's not just something that this township wants.
They know very clearly. Kevin's been dealing with this group for a long time. Uh, it's pretty clear what, uh, what we've been looking for.
Well, the reason I say it, Commissioner McFatridge, is because other line items note specifically Turnpike Commission as collaborators and, and note PennDOT.
We have spoken, we've been involved with all of them, yes.
Understood. And, you know, if, if other projects are talking, or are specifically calling out those entities, I think that it's fair for us to call out those entities as collaborators as well, just so it doesn't get lost.
Okay. While we're talking about this, make sure that this is an agenda item for the CDC meeting.
In November?
Yes.
Any other comments from the board?
So, yeah, I guess, uh, if, if we're, if we're making changes to the MOU and we are pushing this to a agenda item in the CDC meeting, are we now breaking this?
No, 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 no. I'm not, I'm not trying to do that. What I'm saying is, I want this updated regularly. On the CDC meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can always, you know, I'm looking for feedback on Lowermoreland.
Okay.
Uh, one of the questions we asked the Turnpike Commission, and they didn't know what we were talking about, was what happened to the fourth lane in each direction, east and west, on the main corridor? And they, they never even wanted to talk about it. They acted like we didn't know, never heard of it. And you, you drive the turnpike down, you see them putting, uh, pylons in for, for overhead structure. Did they consider the fourth lane or not? You know, like, uh, just, we don't know. It was very clear and concise on, on their long-term plans, their 20, 40 plans for the turnpike, and, and now you can't even find it. So we need to talk about this every month, every meeting. I'm not trying to take this particular commitment back because that's not going to help us.
That's fine.
You just want to be updated.
Right. And would have preferred to have all these line items available in the committee for this.
Sorry, my, my final question, and it's for, for you, Matt. Can you explain the allocation of $10,000 in, in engineering, support services, and technical assistance? How is that broken, broken down for us in collaboration with the rest of the?
Everyone has a flat $10,000. And, and as it mentions in there, the purpose of this is to retain and pay engineering services that would be required for planning purposes for these regional projects. And I think this is still new, so how it specifically gets spent will probably, but the, the concept, the principle is to pay for these professional services to help the group identify and plan and promote, uh, these projects.
Be able to report to us next week, um, what we already committed in the Montgomery County Cross County, or the Cross County Turnpike Carter study. We already made that commitment. I don't know that everybody on this committee did.
Uh, financially?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions? Anybody from the public? Okay. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, 3B, motion to approve the Township Engineer McMahon and Associates, 2023 hourly rate increase. Um, we have a list of what positions are being moved.
Motion is second, first.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay.
Again, we have a list of, uh, the rates that are going up, and it's, this is the time of year they have to do it before we do our budget, so.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any question from the public? All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, C, motion to approve the tax assessment appeal between the Township, the School District of Uppermoreland, and the taxpayer CGCMT 2013-GC17 Marilyn Road.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second. Go ahead, Sam.
Okay, C is just, uh, the, uh, School District goes, goes, tries to reassess some of the businesses in the community that aren't paying enough, and sometimes it comes back and, and goes the other way. This is one of those that went the other way, and, uh, there's been a, uh, do you know what the exact number is, Alex?
Yeah, so, um, for, it'll be an overpayment for 2021 and 2022, and it'll result in a total of $2,646.45 approximately. That's of course if they didn't, you know, prepay, uh, in advance, or, you know, any of those calculations. But, yeah, this is the Spring Hill Suites, um, you know. I think they were not, you know, unique in the sense that, you know, COVID just completely kind of decimated that industry. Um, and this is obviously one of the properties that did not bounce back. So, pretty significant dip in, uh, assessment value at this point.
And isn't this the same property coming in, uh?
Yes.
Correct. There is a redevelopment plan in the works that you guys will see, so.
Okay.
It's not all doom and gloom on this one.
Any other questions from the board? General public? All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, abstain, motion passes.
3D, motion approved ordinance 1734 amending the subdivision and land development ordinance of the Township, we're going to the transportation impact fee.
Second.
First, we have a second.
Our Transportation Impact Fee Committee met, uh, a few times in 2022 to reevaluate this, and it's, uh, resulted in an increase of 17.58%. Which comes out to what was discussed in a public hearing for $2,238.72 per new afternoon peak hour trip.
Any other questions from the board?
Just want to thank the members of the committee for their time and effort in putting this together for us.
Okay.
Agreed.
Anybody from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Um, that concludes business for, uh, Finance Administration.
Okay, Community Development Committee, Mr. Speer.
Evening everyone, we have a few action items this evening. Let me find my agenda. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Pleasure counting. Okay. The committee recommends granting preliminary, final, minor land development approval with conditions to L and A Forever LLC for a truck parking terminal at the property located at 1740 County Line Road.
Second, under the first, resolution 22, uh, 2022-38, Kev.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a first and a second now. You should have waivers on this.
On this particular, um, let me, uh, read the resolution here. Pretty much went through that, um.
There's six. Page four and five.
Okay, res, so, um, I'd like to go down to the, uh, the fourth whereas on the first page. The applicant has since 2021 operated a commercial vehicle storage operation on the property without obtaining the appropriate zoning relief and permits from Uppermoreland Township. Applicant entered into a consent order, which the Township of Montgomery County docket number, you don't need that, and, and received zoning relief from the Uppermoreland Township Zoning Hearing Board in the form of a special exception to permit commercial vehicle storage and parking in a variance allowing for a commercial use within 100 feet of residential tract. The consent order and the decision of the zoning hearing board also imposed certain conditions, which unless modified herein by grant of land development approval, shall continue in favor and in effect. The consent order and the zoning hearing board decision are attached. Okay. Then it goes on and on to, to all the terms of, of the, uh, the resolution. And then we have waivers. Like to go, is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this? Can you be able to answer the waivers on these?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, yes. Um, we received a copy of the draft of the resolution. We have no objections. I know we talked at your committee about the, about the board's, at least your committee's position on the, on the waivers, and we'll proceed as you deem fit.
Okay. Uh, I do have a couple of questions about the waivers, uh, Alex. How they, they seem to, uh, well, how about if we just go through them? Because I, I think they're kind of repetitive about like A, and then it gets broken down later on.
Okay, uh, well, these are the six that came directly from the applicant's waiver request letter. Uh, I believe that the CDC had vetted all six of these, but if we need to strike or modify, we can.
So, um, letter A, a waiver from the requirement to provide curb and sidewalk along street, along the street line of County Line Road.
Give me a second. Anybody seconding that?
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
All right, motion is second. So, so this is just out front on County Line Road. And then other, uh, waivers talk specifically about sidewalks separate and curbs separate. So if we, if we deny or grant A, does that make C and D?
Redundant. Is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
Good question.
Just, I think separate provisions under the code, that's why.
Right. Is there a reason why you specifically requested the waiver along the first one? The street line of County Line Road, why your engineer couched it that way?
Urban sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, urban sidewalk.
Yeah, I guess, I, the only, the only explanation I can offer is that there was just different provisions of the subdivision land development ordinance that required those improvements. And I know in discussing it with the board, that the board, CDC, had suggested that that wouldn't be appropriate for this development, so.
Okay, so what I'm saying to our solicitor, if we denied A, does that cover C and D?
Should, yeah.
I think C is just about the sidewalks and D is about the curbing.
Correct.
So.
It splits them up.
Why we need.
Yeah, it splits them up, you're right. Exactly. Yeah, I agree.
Repetitive in the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, and then B is the internal curbing, just to clarify.
B, B is completely different. I understand that one.
So we could strike A and entertain C and D individually, or, you know, we could grant.
I was striking C and D.
Well, we have a motion and a second for A, so we need to not vote for it so it gets denied, and then we can move on to the others.
No, if, if it is denied.
Then it knocks out C and D.
Correct.
And then you don't entertain C and D. We just redumber them.
Okay, so if you, if you say yes to A and we deny D, we did not, we approved A with A.
Right.
So if you take this out and you approve the sidewalk, uh, the waiver with the sidewalks, and a waiver with the, with the curbing, you're doing the same thing as A, so you don't need A. You can do.
Well, you don't need C and D. If we denied A.
Okay, okay. I'm just saying.
Or you could just vote to remove A altogether. I mean, you have that power to modify the resolution, so.
I don't care. I'm just saying it's redundant, so we.
It is redundant.
If you're going to approve both the curbing and the sidewalks, it doesn't matter what you do. If you're going to vote for one or the other, then you don't do A and you have to do C.
This commissioner's not in favor of approving either.
So just for clarification, if I can add to why they're there. Um, looking at the, at some of our review comments from our engineers and, and some, some of the zoning code, the 315B is about primary streets, and those are ones that would be coordinated through PennDOT. Um, and because it's County Line Road, typically that would go off to, to PennDOT for coordination. The other two items that are listed under C and D are there because that's more under the township's jurisdiction, roads that, that we all work with, so, um, because it's sidewalks and curbs within our township, but also the, the county road, then it became, or state road, excuse me, then it's, it's why it's there twice. But, um, I'm in agreement that we can bypass one or the other.
Mr. Speer, on another front, would it be easier for us as the applicant to withdraw those requests for the, the waivers on those items? So the board doesn't have to vote on it. We hereby withdraw those waiver requests. Make it easier.
All the, I mean.
Those ones related to curbing sidewalk. I think a couple of the other ones were.
AC and D. Go on, okay. I'll withdraw my motion. We'll accept your withdrawal.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, we will move. Move on to letter B. Uh, a waiver from the requirement to post curbing all around, all, uh, curbing around all parking lot areas.
Second.
All right, motion and second for this, uh, discussion item. And this is internal, uh, away from the state of the street. Uh, I know there's some mixed feelings about, um, moving stormwater, conveying stormwater with them, but I, I will support this particular, uh, waiver.
Hey, anyone else?
Yeah, so I had a problem with this one when we talked about it last time. Um, without curbing on the interior surfaces, there's nothing directing water anywhere on the site. And because we're near, uh, we're near residential zones, we're near, uh, the hiking trail, we're near a busy road, I'm not in favor of this because we have no way to control any of the, the water that's aggregating on top of all the pavement and things that you have on that site. Um, so I'm against it.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, also, I stated in the, the other meeting that I would be against it because I don't want to see any overflow onto a grass area and the water and stuff, so. I stated that in the, uh, in the other committee meeting. Is there anybody from the?
Uh, so I understand what everybody's saying about curbing doing that, but the conveyance of stormwater is a requirement, you know, through, I mean, we see all these plans and everything, but I understand how you feel, and that's okay. It's, it's an erosion issue also.
If I may, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, just a quick question. I, I couldn't remember, is this plan going to require a stormwater management plan? Okay, so is the idea, and I know your engineer might not be here, but is the idea to have all of this graded to a, to, to the extent that all of this will, will sheet flow down to the new stormwater management facility?
Essentially, yes. And I think certain inlets are going to be installed along the way to pipe it underground to the stormwater management facility.
So that might address the concern. I guess it would have to be a stormwater management plan satisfactory to our engineer.
And that would be my only comment, if the board was inclined to consider this as a waiver with the caveat that we will continue to work with the township engineer to the extent they require it in certain areas and not in others to allow for the proper flow of the storm.
I do have a note here that says unless the applicant agrees to provide another strategy to direct runoff. So here you say that, I'm, I'm more.
So should we, uh?
Now, we still have the motion.
We do. Okay.
Okay.
So, uh.
Any other comments?
Well.
Could, could we say this is approved subject to, uh, the approval of the township engineer for adequate stormwater management flow?
Yeah, yeah.
Would that be satisfactory?
We have to reword our waiver, correct?
You would vote yes to grant it with the caveat that the applicant.
Okay, an additional one. Okay, I can do that.
Is that so moved, Kevin?
Yes, I'm moved.
I'll second it.
That's another waiver, though, Sam. Will, will, will it be another? Yep, that's it.
Anybody from the general public? Okay, with that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, I'm a nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. That, that particular waiver passes.
Getting there.
Okay.
Abstain. Not abstain, you missed that one. All, motion passes. Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, so, uh, will we introduce a new C?
Yeah, letter E becomes letter C.
Okay. Well, I'm going to include the, uh, the new one. About the curbing, so that, uh, le, letter C would be a waiver to satisfy all the requirements of the township engineer and to, to, uh, install curbing as.
We'll add that condition B, or I'm sorry, to waiver B, you know, it's additional language.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought we had a, we had a vote on that separate. We're there?
Yeah, you're there.
Done.
We just have to have an agreement, uh, from the applicant.
Right, which I believe applicant has agreed.
Okay, very good. Appreciate the suggestion. Thank you.
No problem.
If C and D was withdrawn, C should be on E.
E, correct, which would be the new C. All right, uh, from the requirement of preliminary land subdivision submission to permit applicant plans to classify as a preliminary final.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this? We're, something we always approve. Uh, from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
And a partial waiver from the requirement to provide information related to all existing features located within 400 feet of this site.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, any questions from the board?
Again, pretty much standard, uh, waiver if, if there's, uh, significant features that really need to be identified.
Any questions from the public? All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, before we vote on the entire resolution, I have a comment to the, uh, question to the applicant about the, uh, McMahon letter, or all letters. County, uh, our, our, several review and the, uh, transportation.
Will comply.
Any, any objections to any of them?
No objections.
Very good.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more? We already had one. That's okay. Uh, any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, I'm against because of the curbing. Uh, abstain, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Six to one.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, the committee recommends granting amending, uh, uh, I'm sorry, skip one. Committee recommends, uh, in favor of resolution R22, uh, 2022-39 approving an agreement to permit the use of the area within the township's right-of-way for the placement retaining wall located at 418 Lawton Road.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh.
This was extensively reviewed in committee.
Is there anybody here for this? I don't think they, we told them they really wouldn't have to be. Okay. Uh, any questions from the public?
I'd just like to say we reviewed this committee, it become a surprise to the applicant about the person that built the wall, uh, and I support this. We, we have several of these agreements throughout the township.
I agree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, um, letter B, the committee recommends the approval of resolution R20-22 granting amending preliminary and final land development approval with conditions to Olive Garden Holdings LLC.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, we also have, uh, a waiver in this, eh?
Yes. That's the purpose of it, this single waiver.
Waiver is the amendment.
Okay, uh, uh, after the, the, um, last committee meeting, it already approved this land development with this caveat, and they, they came back to us for a partial waiver from the requirement to install sidewalk along existing streets, a butt of land development to allow the reduction of required minimum width of five foot to four foot in, in portions of the property where existing pole is located.
We have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Uh, any other questions on this?
This is a waiver to permit them to go to, uh, less than five, from five feet to four feet for about 20 feet, uh, where the, the construction of the sidewalk is, uh, encroaching.
Okay. Any public comment? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Congratulations, nice job.
Thank you for working with us on that.
Hey, but we have to prove the motion.
Yeah, we.
Let it go.
That was just a waiver.
Okay.
We have the, uh, any more discussion for the full vote on it? Any public comment? No. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion. Abstain, motion passes, you're done with that.
That's the honor of the jury. Okay. The committee recommends the approval of conditional use and decision order for the stations at Willagrove as discussed in committee.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
As I stated at the public hearing of recusing on this application.
Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, I will. Okay, so this was a condition for the actual, the use of the building. That was part of the original land development and part of our code. So that they can use, so that the owner of the building can establish an office space within this building. And we support that, but we had to change this particular. We'll allow for this waiver from the code in this resolution. Is that right?
Yeah, in a nutshell, yes. Yeah, you're not modifying your code, you're just modifying for this specific project.
It was.
Okay, any other comments on the board?
Yeah, this is a disappointing turn of events for the property and for the township. That was developed in a certain way to be a certain type of amenity for the community, the train station, for the walking district in town. And unfortunately, it's turning into a leased space for the private business, which is fine. And I know that they need to fill that space and I get it. So I am for this, for granting this, but I would be remiss to not note that is a disappointment. Especially because I think they caved a little too early. I know COVID was challenging and finding any rentable tenant in a coffee shop or retail space during that time would be challenging. But I understand that business is business and they needed a leasable space or leased space.
I'll jump on that and say, you know, with a building with three or four hundred apartments and five or six, seven hundred people, they couldn't have put in a deli or a dry cleaning store or anything because they were saying that parking was a problem. Well, they have people living there, so I didn't understand why they couldn't.
So I think we all have some lessons learned from this particular application and this particular piece of the land development. And where we look at the entire development as walkable and we anticipate it, retail space without cars. And it just, I think the developer learned from it and the applicant learned from it, the attorney learned from it, and we learned from it. And we all will take these lessons learned and go forward with future land development.
Well, and to that point too, I don't think this is a lesson learned where now we give up and we revise everything we've done in order to push downtown to be walkable to an extent. I think however, we do need to pay attention to the fact that it's in a transition phase. There's still a requirement for vehicles, there's still a requirement for off-street parking and for surface lots and things like that. And I hope that through future development, as we continue to work downtown, we put all of that into account.
I think we all are working very well in the same direction. And we don't need to soften our code to future land development. But some of the, when I say lessons learned pertaining to like the design of the building and entrances.
Sure, sure.
That are appealing and walkable.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I agree. Okay, anybody from the general public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain, motion passes. We have one abstention. You do know, okay.
Okay, letter D, committee makes a motion to approve the concept of conveying the current trash collection to automated trash collection.
Okay.
Need a second, or maybe not?
We have a second. On this, it's not that we are converting to it. It is, this is really, and Mike can correct me. This is for them to do all the phases and figure out what it would cost at the end and an operational thing at the end. We are not committing money to it yet until we would have everything. This is just to say, okay, go forward with the assumption that this board would be for this. If they did it financially and everything that worked out better.
Yeah, so the idea is before Dave starts to work on all the detailed proposal for financing and timing and phasing and all that kind of thing, we wanted to make sure that the board was conceptually in agreement with going with automated trash. So it's kind of a step one of a several step.
Well, I think you made it very clear when we did discuss this as a committee that the reason this is here is for consideration of ARPA funds. Because this would identify the board being in favor of it and then the next step would be to survey the board for the commitment of that $300-plus thousand to the purchase of the cans.
Right, that would be one option for financing. It is if the board was in agreement and they were in agreement with the financing and phasing. And one way of starting it off would be with ARPA funds, but that hasn't been fully developed yet.
Well, but it's included, it's included here in the motion. So that would have to be a separate vote for sure, so I think it's.
Well, we haven't voted on anything to do with the second half of the ARPA fund yet.
I understand that.
Yeah, this is just to say it's a concept. Should we go, should Dave go forward? And are we okay with that? I'm a no, just so everybody knows.
And it's fair to state, Matt, that we should not conflate the motion as it's written with the background source material that's on the introductory pages to the motion, right? So the motion here is just to talk about.
Discussion.
The concept of converting. Whatever's written here under fiscal impact and source is here just as background information.
Right, right, yes.
You've put together, it's not, we're not voting on any of that.
It was part of the committee discussion.
It was part of the discussion, correct, correct, but.
We probably should have removed that. I mean, because it, we carried it over from the committee, but you're right, it's not part of the motion. You guys are not, if you approve this, you're not approving the funding.
We're, we are potentially approving digging into this in more detail to figure out if it's right for the township.
Well, concept.
Yes.
It would come back to this group again. This is not any sort of final approval.
I just don't want to lead on. I think we have the best trash department of any township around. And unless it would be substantial savings and still be able to do everything the way we do it, I would not be in favor of actually changing. We are well-known for the best trash service around. And it's, I think it's the reason everybody else has either, there's only a few townships that do it themselves anymore. Everybody's been outsourcing. And you can't get the people to come back, you can't, there's a lot of problems with it. It might be a little bit of a tax saving. But I like the way it is now. Unless I can be convinced later, but I just don't want to lead anybody on that I am for this.
I don't think anybody's being led on about anybody particularly in favor of this because of the reputation we have. But I do appreciate the discussion in committee that there are certain residents that abuse it and that we will have to initiate some kind of change eventually. So I'm in favor of more discussion about it. And I think we did get a spreadsheet that identified significant savings over a long period of time.
I think the most compelling part of Dave's argument was safer workers and moving some of the employees who are dissatisfied in that specific type of job into other positions within the public works department that would give them a more satisfying workday. It seemed like this was something that, although expensive, would greatly improve the well-being and the morale of that department. So I'm for it.
Well said. Commissioner approves the, I'm in favor because of that also. And there's the savings and the employee morale and reduced injury.
As an aside, I just read an article recently. Organizations like Greenpeace and other environmental groups are saying we need to give up on recycling plastic. First of all, it's become impossible to contain. If you try to repurpose it, you use more energy, you know, to melt it down or whatever, then you release poisonous gases into the atmosphere. In any case, it's better to put it in landfills than it is to try and recycle it or send it to a third world country.
And I think, I agree with that, but that's going to be for a discussion for our committee.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying.
But you're right, it's all coming out now, that's what they're saying.
More likely to go to more trash.
But the article also read that insurance savings, if we do go this way, there'll be a reduction in our insurance costs because of workers' comp issues and other things.
We do not know that.
Yeah. That was one of my questions, I need to be shown that. I need, I want to see it black and white. And if we can manage it and make it a comprehensive, good, a plan you can't say no to, then I'm there. But until we get to that point and you say, this is the exact cost we had, this is what was for public works, this is what we're hoping to reduce, this, and just because you have workers' comp losses in public works, it doesn't mean it's from the guys who are in the back of the trash truck, but it could be anything.
Well, and I guess I would defer to Dave on this, but my understanding is, is that we have at least one example with recycling. Now, recycling tends to be even a little bit lighter to handle than trash collection. And when we went from, when we went automated in recycling, our workers' comp claims went down. Is that correct, at least for the recycling collection?
Unless you're the arm on the truck.
I'm sorry?
Unless you're the arm on the truck that lifts the.
There was, there were significant variables to that. I agree with that and it did save. But it was a person on the truck, off the truck, on the truck, off the truck, every single stop. And we had issues with the steps on those trucks several times. But it clearly is a a less invasive thing for the human body when picking up all that recycling.
And I know the board understands, but with, you know, with trash collection, you've got people hundreds of times each day, maybe even more than that, jumping on and off the truck. So that's one that's just pounding people's knees. And then the picking up trash tends to be heavier than the recycling is. So you're doing that hundreds of times just in one day, maybe even more than that. It might even be thousands, but it's, that's going to take a toll on someone's back and their shoulders. So the main reason was, was the improved safety conditions for our workers. It just so happens that it could be structured in a way that could produce cost savings as well. And I think it would also provide time savings. I think there's been some indication with, again, with recycling, that that truck, that automated truck is going to go a lot faster than when you have two people hopping on and off. So it actually could save some time as well.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Again, I expect this to be a regular committee item. Committee agenda item.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, I'm a nay. Abstain? Motion passes.
Okay, the committee recommends a letter supporting Pennsylvania Ecological Restoration Trust, submission of a DCNR grant.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. This was, this was just a letter to support the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration. There was no commitment to money in this. We sent a support letter, that's why this is in here.
So over the last five to six years, the Penny Pack Trust has become an excellent partner with stormwater management and raising funds for projects throughout the township. So I'm supporting this initiative.
Okay, any other commission comment? Public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Motion passes.
I heard that.
Type wrong.
So. So let's redo that. The motion to approve ratification of a letter supporting the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust, submission of a DCNR letter.
Anthony? Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any more discussion?
Just vote on them.
We don't want to make any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain, motion passes.
The committee recommends approval awarding the bid of the installation of the signalization upgrades for part of the Green Light Go grant.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion.
What's Senator Slex's for?
What's that?
Nothing, go.
Look, this is, we discussed as a committee, recommendation, recommend. We all support this.
Okay, any other discussion?
There is, and I didn't see it on the agenda summary and we probably should have included it. The original budget and amount was $147,000 and some change. The bid came in at 115. Anton Kuner, when he was here at the committee meeting, gave the additional option of still staying with the $147,000 and adding some additional work onto that contract. And the committee, I think, was okay with that concept. He started some conversations with PennDOT to make sure they would be fine with that. And if they are, is the board still okay with adding that additional work? We'd still be at 147, but we would get additional work done at those intersections.
I think we even threw around a couple of ideas for Dave to consider at the committee meeting, so I'm completely supportive.
Okay, any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Motion passes.
Gee, all right, Samuel.
Getting lost.
No, I had to check one thing on that last one. Motion to approve Maryland Road Culvert Rehab Replacement Options.
I'm not seconding this, I'm asking a question.
All right, I'll second it.
You can't ask yet.
Second.
Okay, we got a first, we got a second, now discussion.
I wanted to table this, I don't think this is ready for vote.
This is to vote for them to go forward with trying. They have to go to, this is the money. This is so they could go to FEMA and everybody to see if they could actually do this. Because if FEMA says no, because it's a quarter inch higher in flood plain, we can't do it anyway.
All right, these motions have to be. Because that's not.
That is correct, right?
Yes, that's correct. So I think, is your concern that this approval would allocate the funds?
My concern was that this, this motion was to approve an option.
This was.
That we have not, we have not come down to approve an option.
We, we did at the committee meeting say to move forward for him to go out and for that option to redo it.
To, we had said during the committee to relook at the rehab option.
Yes.
As an intermediate condition between rehab and replacement. Because he had a full replacement option, he had a full rehab option, but we were saying that some of the abutments were still satisfactory. And it was the grinding between the conditions of the supports. That's what I think that we were looking at still. So none of the options were satisfactory. We had requested that he looks at one more and sees if it's acceptable to FEMA. So I don't know what we're actually voting on here other than I'm perfectly fine voting on a motion that says, let's give them permission to go out and
or let's take.
Look at that third option and ask some questions about it.
If, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it says there's two options, the rehabilitation option and the full replacement option. I guess that's the two things that they're talking about analyzing.
Those are the two, no. So they came, so the full replacement was about two and a half million dollars.
Two point eight six, yeah, yeah.
A little more than two and a half. A little more than two and a half. The, the, the rehabilitation was six hundred and some odd thousand dollars. What they would have to do, the next step, if the board was agreeable with that rehabilitation concept, is they have to then apply to DEP to make sure, remember they did the evaluation on what impact it would have on stormwater flows?
By law, they can't reduce it. That's.
Right, but the question is, they're going to go to the, to, to DEP to, to make, to see if they can get some sort of approval for that.
The option clearly reduces it minimal.
It, it is pretty minimal, and, and since the cost is so dramatic, I think the hope was that DEP would look at it and say, okay, it's, it's, it's a minimal kind of impact. And given the cost, it, it, it's reasonable to go forward with the rehabilitation. We, you know, there's no mad rush. This, we could, we could put this on the next CDC committee for further discussion if, if we're not totally clear. That's not going to create any problems if we did that.
Is that okay with you?
So. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm okay. Uh, you know, all it's about, all this is about is an okay for McMahon to spend their time going ahead and do that.
But they'll be, it's funding. I mean, it is going to cost them money to do that.
So, um, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Peruzzi. We could, uh, reword the, uh, the motion. And I'm willing to do that if, uh, you want to deny this one or accept the amended approval.
I will be happy to.
Uh, I'd rather, Alex, clarify what we can do.
You have the option to amend it. So instead of just, if you deny it, then it's off the table, right? And then you have to wait until next meeting.
Right.
You can propose an amended motion and then vote on that.
Okay. So my preempted, my amended, uh, motion is to approve McMahon Associates' efforts to investigate the rehab option of the Maryland Culvert versus the replacement option.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I, I second that. I think the.
Regardless, I'll do it.
I'm sure that I'm, I'm amenable to change.
Thanks for pointing it out. I like.
Guys, I'm just trying to make this go past eight. Okay, any questions from the public?
Fifteen minutes.
Alright. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Charles.
That concludes the business of the community development committee. Thank you very much.
Yes, you are done. You're on. Uh, Public Health and Safety, Charles.
Yes, good evening. Uh, the committee recommended the motion to approve civil service motion. Civil Service Commission adopted R. 2022 dash 12.
Okay, with that, Dr.
Okay.
Let me get a sec, let me get a second. You got a second?
I did second it.
Okay. Now, discussion.
Okay, discussion. Chief Block?
Thank you, Commissioner Wording. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, the purpose of this request for, uh, the motion to approve Resolution 202241, uh, backing up the Civil Service Commission's resolution is to change the grading, uh, with the promotional exams for sergeant and lieutenant. Right now, it's fifty percent written, fifty percent of the oral examination to come out with their weighted score of a hundred percent. We're making this motion to change this to thirty percent for the written and seventy percent for the oral examination. We feel it's prudent in this, uh, day and age that our supervisors have, um, keen communication skills in moving forward within the organization as well as the township when dealing with certain situations. Reason being is, from my experience over the years, is the ability to communicate, uh, in a timely manner with peoples is critical. Uh, they have knowledge of our policies, procedures, as well as the state and local laws, um, which will be part of the oral examination. Um, the ability to, uh, work under stressful conditions and express their concerns under the stressful conditions as well as de-escalation. We find it more interactive this way versus a more static situation with a written examination. So that's the background on the request for, um, the motion to amend the current grading procedures.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, discussion from the board?
Yeah, I, I want to ask, uh, so what would be the minimal score? What if someone completely failed the written exam? Could they still pass with a seventy percent?
There, there is no failure, if you will. It's the composite scores put together. So, um, thirty percent of the written exam score will be added into the seventy percent on what they received with their oral score. So if you read, if you read the ordinance, there's no failure in the, in the civil service ordinance.
I'm saying in the, and when, so when they get, they get on the list, would they, would they get on the list with seventy?
Sure, but they'd be rather low.
Be less.
What would be the range of, uh, people most likely to be, uh, hired? Like ninety and above?
It depends on, on how they, they do in the oral. I don't have, that's the whole purpose to have the, the.
I'm just thinking back to people we've interviewed here and.
Oh.
They generally have really high scores.
Well, now, the, the last round of, uh, if my memory serves me correct, on, on the sergeant's examination, I think the highest score was eighty-one composite, but it was not, it was at fifty-fifty. It wasn't at seventy-thirty.
Question. If you have a veteran taking a test, how does that affect your?
Does not affect this. The veteran points are awarded for hiring.
Before hiring?
For hiring.
Before hiring.
Those, those points are applied when, when they're hired, um, under civil service. So it does not have any bearing on, on the promotional examinations.
That's part of the reason why you have people in the, because if they scored a eighty-one, they got ten points and it was a ninety-one. And you had, and you still had to take them over somebody that was ninety-three.
To move them up, correct. If they're in the top three, you have to hire the veteran on, on the entry level.
Regardless of what, I just want to make sure everybody understands that, so.
Uh, I, listen, over the past few years, we made several, uh, changes to our civil service regulations, and I've been in favor of most of them. Uh, and I think this is a, an additional change. It's good. And I think, uh, Chief Block identified it well that as a police officer, you really require oral and interactive skills. Uh, written, written scores are very important. Do you understand the knowledge of it? But I, I think, uh, as far as being a cop, it's about de-escalation and personal, personal.
How about writing a report?
It's in there.
It's in there.
It's very much in there.
The written part?
Absolutely.
It's part of the written exam, but it's be able to, be able to articulate what you learn on the written examination, and you have to translate that with, uh, several other benchmarks.
And as you mentioned, this is for, these are for leadership positions.
Correct, it's for sergeant and lieutenants.
I don't want you to think that, you know, uh, that a thirty percent score on a written test doesn't mean it's a challenging exam.
No, I under, I understand.
Okay.
Really counting, you know, I'm in favor of more, more education, the better.
I, I think your question was a fair question, huh? I mean, thirty, if, if, if somebody fails one of these sections a hundred percent of the way, then what does that mean for their overall score when you, when you waited? So it's not a, it's not a weighted, it's not a weighted score per se. It's just a, it's like your SATs where you've got two sections and each one is worth a certain amount, and you get an aggregate score.
It would put, put them on, on the bottom third of the list, so that, you know, the, the chances of being promoted, um, wouldn't be good.
Right, fair.
And see, we, we also have to remember, we are talking about the sergeant and the lieutenant positions for these particular services.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? General public?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
concludes my report.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Scott.
One item. The committee recommends the board commissioners take act, action on the following. A motion to approve and authorize the Director of Parks and Recreation to submit a TreeCityUSA application.
Second.
We got a, first we have a second. Uh, and the other discussion.
Long overdue.
I'm the public. Okay? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, motion carries, passes. Okay, uh, item number nine is, uh, just the, the calendar that is in, uh, every month now. It's put into our meeting, and it would be on the website on this, uh, all these rooms that are being used. Uh, I do want to say the tree lighting, the holiday tree lighting is this Saturday night, five o'clock, uh, in the center of Willow Grove, where it normally is. Just wanted to give an update. Any other comments from the board?
Question about that.
Yes.
Is the tree being lit at five o'clock or the event starts probably by? Because last year I was there at five oh one and that tree was lit already.
It's, we're pretty punctual.
Okay.
So, yes, you're right. There will be a gathering long before that.
And if it's cold, it, it will be punctual.
To get there at four forty-five.
Okay, any other comments? Want to add anything? Anybody on the board?
Uh, I have, is this Commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, um, it was an absolute pleasure to, uh, make service awards this evening and that, um, you know, in this day and age where people change jobs every, uh, five to seven years, that, uh, uh, we're very proud of our, our long-term township employees and hope to continue to recognize them, uh, with the anniversary awards going forward.
This will be done quarterly.
Yeah, so the group that, so all of the employees that receive service awards during a particular quarter will break them all to, I mean, to the next quarter or October first, the end of the calendar, we will probably be at that rate.
Okay, the only other meeting I can say is, uh, when you come for community development, uh, next week, might be a long one because we're going to laptops. So, we're going to start converting, so, uh, you might need a little patience. I know for me you will. So, okay, other than that, we're adjourned.
Go Birds.
You?
Go Birds.